Good evening. I'd like to call the Licensing Board for January 20th to order. And would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four items on the licensing agenda. Item number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes, January 6th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item number two, original Class B combination license for Shots LLC, Shots 271, South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item number three, original Class B combination license for the Compa LLC, Main Street Cafe, 817 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side, motion carry. Item number four, operators licenses with a list in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Being no further light, uh, business before the Licensing Board, I approve. I adjourn.
Thanks, Steve. I would now like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have three items on tonight's agenda, the first being the minutes from our regular meeting on December 16th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any changes or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number two is the permission to advertise contract 20-05 Tree Surety 2020, presentation by Cindy Lyons. Cindy?
Good evening. Uh, this year we had less applications for street trees than we have in the past couple of years. Um, so we have a total of 238 trees applied for in subdivisions and along streets, um, which is a kind of a good thing because we didn't get a forestry grant this year. So with less trees, less money. That's a good thing. Um, but we did have more, we purchased more trees ahead of time. Um, and the other, the reason for that was because Johnson's Nursery told us they lost 50 of the 150 pre-contracted trees that we contracted with them to grow because of these polar vortexes that are coming down. So we ended up purchasing trees. We got, uh, credit for those, but we ended up purchasing more trees. With the lower number of trees the contractor has to purchase, I'm hoping we get more bids in besides just Dan Larson. He's a good contractor and he's done really well for us the last few years, but we're hoping to get a little bit more, um, competition between contractors. Their main concern was that they don't want to go out and look for pricing on like a hundred and some trees when they don't know if they're going to get the contract. So this year, all they have to look for is less than 30 trees to buy for the project, and then they're going to plant the total number for us, our trees that we pre-purchased plus the ones that they buy. Um, so the total estimate for this year for the planting is 53,000. That includes, uh, contingency fee. It also includes extra watering for a 14-week period if we need it. So if they don't need it, the price would be lower than that. Um, and this would come out of capital money that's been allocated for the project, carryover money, and then we also have money in the Tree Surety Program, which is the program that the developers give us money for street trees when the subdivision is created and we hold those in a separate account to pay for those trees in that area. So we're looking for permission to bid that contract this year.
All right. Thanks, Cindy. Anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thanks, Cindy. Item number three is the permission to advertise contracts to install public improvements within Tiff District 14. Presentation by Max Michel. Max?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, this item is to, um, ask for permission to advertise contracts to build public improvements within a future Tiff District Park that, um, the city is pursuing. Um, this is Tiff 14 that proposes the creation of an industrial park on the southeast side of the city. Uh, it's about, um, 200, over 200 acre for this industrial park to be developed by the city. And, um, so we're looking for permission to advertise for contracts to install new roads, extensions of utilities, sanitary sewer, water main, as needed. Um, on the attached map that you have, there's some, um, preliminary schedule of, um, basically the, the phases that would be proposed. So at this time, we would be looking at, um, building the main road that's, um, highlighted in yellow and, um, that would help develop that first phase, um, A. Um, the alternates would develop as needed when, um, developments come in. And, um, so we're asking for permission to advertise, um, contracts in the future, um, hoping to be able to address, uh, Area A and Alternate A1 this year yet, in 2020.
All right. Thank you, Max. Anybody have any questions for Max?
And that's, that's running utilities and road and all that down the, down the yellow path for now?
Yes, that would be sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, et cetera, um, with the road pavement.
Okay. And then the alternate A1 and A2, is that still going to be the city's responsibility once that land is sold, or is that going to pass on to the developer?
Um, that would most likely be the utility. Um, that would most likely be the city's responsibility. Basically, um, we build the public improvement and sell the land to future developers. That's the same process that we used for the industrial park that's on the other side of the road, Tiff 11, where we installed the public infrastructures and then, um, sold the land to, um, potential developers.
Great. Thanks, Max.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Thanks, Max. And with no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn. All right, I guess I'm back. I would now like to call to order the Board of, or the Finance Committee. We have two items on tonight's agenda. The first is the minutes from the meeting on December 16th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number two is the 2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Association Local 503. Jay?
Michelle was not able to be here tonight, so I told her that I would take this for her. The, um, city had a chance, myself, Michelle, and Kim Wendelborn, who is here representing their union, met with Doug Nelson, their counsel, and had a chance to review previous agreements, discuss this future agreement, the one for 2020, and the resulting request is in your packet tonight. If there's any questions about it, I can attempt to answer. I'm sure Kim would be willing to do the same, but we had a productive conversation and are bringing this forward for you tonight.
Thanks, Jay. Anybody have any questions?
One que, any changes to the benefits package?
Nope. The only, um, item that we negotiate with this group is the, the wages. So that's, that's the entire agreement that you have before you.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. And with that being the last item on the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Andrew. We call the Common Council Meeting to order for January 20th. Note that we have 15 items on the agenda. We do have a quorum with Alderman, Kasten, Absonic, Skews, and District 8 currently vacant. Item number one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes, January 6th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number two is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a correction. That was items two through seven is the total consent agenda. So with that, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number eight is the ordinance to permanently zone approximately 24.5 acres of land located at 4450 Roan Road to M2 heavy industrial use, P1 park, recreation, and open space, NSW non-shoreland wetlands, FPS floodplain storage, FPW floodplain wetland zoning districts by John Roan and Jill Martin. Presentation by, my brain just died.
Mark Petrovich.
I'm sorry, Mark.
It's one of them nights. No problem. Thank you. Um, the, the ordinance before you tonight is basically to establish the permanent zoning on this property. It was recently annexed, um, by the city or attached to the city back in December of 2019. It's a two-step process under statutory regulation. So we, um, we've, um, taken this to Plan Commission, who's endorsed this, uh, this change, or this change, and we're asking you to approve it. The zoning, um, for the developable portion of the property is M2 heavy industrial. That's consistent with what's adjoining it in the, um, River Road Industrial Park to the north. It's, um, the site is a currently developed industrial site, so it's, it conforms to this proposed M2 zoning. The rest of the, um, environmental designations, the, um, P1 open space, the non-shoreland wetland, the floodplain storage, the floodplain wetlands are all just identif, or, um, recognizing environmental constraints that exist within the property for both wetland, floodplain, and shoreline jurisdiction. We recommend approval of it. I should say also that this is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and it is, um, the appropriate because it's consistent with the boundary agreement with the, um, Town of West Bend.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine, resolution creating tax increment District Number 14, approving of its project plan and establishing its boundaries. City of West Bend, Wisconsin. And a presentation by Phil from Elers. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, Phil Costin with Elers. Nice to be back with you. In your packet, you have two documents. One is a draft project plan, and then the second is a corresponding resolution to approve the project plan. A little bit stepping back real quick, uh, this is really the second approval that will be sought for this new tax increment district. We had a organizational meeting of the Joint Review Board on December 17th. That same evening, we held a public hearing in front of Plan Commission. Uh, there's no public comment on, on the project plan, and the Plan Commission, on a unanimous vote, approved the boundaries of the project plan, uh, which then forwards it on to the Common Council for action tonight. If you approve it tonight, it'll go back in front of the Joint Review Board, which is scheduled for February 4th at 4 o'clock. So that'll be the final step, uh, for the approval process. In the project plan, on page three, there is a quick summary page, and, uh, we've already, uh, earlier tonight, uh, allowed, uh, Max to, to seek bids, uh, on some of the anticipated public improvements, but this is a district that will be an industrial tax increment district. It'll be the first new district since 2011, uh, in the city. Uh, industrial district means it can be used, at least 50% of the property has to be zoned and suitable for industrial purpose, and it must remain that zoning, uh, for the life of the district what's been, it's been put in place. I would speculate that this district will mostly entirely be industrial. Uh, we are identifying, uh, this is again industrial, meaning it has a maximum life of 20 years that it can stay open and/or until the obligations are paid off, uh, and then the district would be required to be closed. There, the city has gone through and done an, an analysis on potential costs, uh, related to this tax increment district. What's been identified, uh, through the three phases is about $12.8 million in costs, broken up over a number of years, obviously paced with development and, and, uh, different activities that are happening out in the business park. Uh, at full buildout, the anticipation is that we're going to see over $60 million in new taxable development. The base value, what's there today is 125,000 in value total, uh, for the property as it stands right now. Uh, developable acres is about 174 acres. It's been broken up, uh, between three different phases. Um, and we have, uh, run an analysis to show the level of development needed to support each of the phases and the costs related to each of the phases. The initial costs, uh, there is a capital borrowing related to this tax increment district. It's going to be, uh, taking, uh, we're taking bids on tomorrow. Uh, that'll be for the initial investment of the land acquisition and some related, um, soft costs, some professional costs pertaining to the tax increment district. Later this year, the second series, the public improvement side will be upwards of about 2.9 million. Uh, that'll be needed to kind of open up that Area A that you heard about from Max a little bit earlier. So, uh, we've run through and, uh, made sure that, uh, due diligence standpoint, we've run a couple of scenarios as far as levels of development needed to support, uh, the tax increment district, and I think city staff is very comfortable that those levels can be hit, uh, throughout the life of the district. Uh, since the Plan Commission met, there's one additional item in the project plan that was not, uh, in the project plan at the time, and that is, um, the city attorney has provided an opinion, which is a requirement in the statutes, uh, indicating that the project plan as written meets all the statutory requirements, uh, and that's the final page or the second last page of the project plan that you have in front of, uh, in front of you. So we're looking for, uh, council action tonight to approve the project plan and the boundaries. Uh, if that is, if that occurs tonight, it'll go on to the Joint Review Board, again, scheduled for February 4th, uh, for final vote at that time. So that's a relatively quick summary. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you want to have any questions for Phil?
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Item number 10 is a discussion and a decision on how to fill the Aldermanic District 8 vacancy due to a resignation.
The, by statute, uh, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. Uh, you can appoint, uh, members, uh, or a member to replace, uh, the, uh, Alderman Kist, or you can direct it to a special election. Uh, given the timing, the election wouldn't occur until, I believe, what, September, November? It would be a substantial delay, oh, August, okay. Uh, substantial delay. Um, typical procedure in the past has been to post for, uh, people to apply and then for the council to consider those individuals who do apply and, uh, vote to appoint somebody.
Is that, that's what we did the last time?
Correct. That's what's happened the last several times.
Okay. Okay. Was there any issues with those?
I don't, I don't think there's been any issue.
Anything we would change about that process? Maybe take a private vote instead of?
Uh, it does have to be a public.
I know that, but I mean, each write out and hand it to somebody to?
It has to be attributed to the person who voted. You have to, yeah, you could sign your name, but it has to be, like, it has to be tallied as a public vote as to who voted for who.
Sure, sure, sure.
Justice, would you maybe want a more, um, intimate interviewing process with that? Is that maybe what you're going for?
Possibly. Yeah, it seems like people might be more comfortable if they're not feeling so on the spot, uh, um, I don't know, more be themselves and we can see more who they are and?
I mean, given what it is, it has to be, it's not a closed session.
It's got to be completely.
It's got to be a closed session.
And I don't, I don't mean to be.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Ian, is there someone that has stepped forward that we know as of right now that's willing to fill that position?
I don't, we haven't published anything yet.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. We, we wanted, we had to come here and?
So once we publish it, then?
There, there is a press release with a notice and a request for applications or request for letters indicating interest.
Okay.
So.
Can I share the stab at the timeline?
Yeah.
In crafting the press release, assuming that you might be going down the road of accepting applications, um, staff did put together an attempt at that timeline. So I'll just read it, read out the dates that we had thrown out, that the application could be posted, um, requesting applications, the notice for that could be posted as soon as this evening. We're prepared to, to put that on our Facebook page and then send a press release to all our local media. We, we suggested a, a required due date of February 10th at 4:30 PM, um, due to the city clerk, and then Stephanie would share those with, with all of you. Uh, we had proposed a timeline of, of interviewing the applicants at the February 17th meeting. If you wanted to do them in advance of the meeting, you could do that as long as it's an open session meeting. You could schedule it for an earlier time than the 6:25 timeframe, and even in a different setting if you wanted to, um, short of the current makeup. And then obviously would fulfill the, the term, the remainder of the term through April of 2021. It's just, again, a couple of dates that you can set it however you want to set them. If you want to modify the, the, the date that it's to be returned by, we have proposed February 10th and then February 17th as far as reviewed by council. We can change those as you set them.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with that. That gives us about a few weeks out to, to look. So I'll, I'll make that motion to proceed.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any more comments or questions regarding this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 11, a resolution honoring James White Amendment. Um, we honored Mr. White for his time with the city last council meeting, and there was a couple of minor errors that were made on the resolution, and they have since been corrected. So we have to basically approve this new resolution with the corrections that were made.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 12, introduction to an ordinance creating Section 7.07 Sub 3, limited time parking restriction of Chapter 7, traffic code of the miserable code. This is for discussion only. Ian, you want to?
Uh, so this ordinance was drafted, uh, quite a while, um, ago, I would say, possibly even last summer, um, after, uh, several, uh, elected officials, uh, requested, uh, that the city designate five spaces, uh, in the Walnut Street parking lot as 30-minute customer parking. Um, that parking lot is currently, uh, about half permit parking and then half, like, short-term, um, customer parking. This would just be a further, uh, kind of limitation on five spots there. Um, it's, this, it's a fairly straightforward ordinance that just designates the five spots, um, post signs, and then it would be 30-minute customer parking for essentially normal business hours for retail locations down in that area from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Can I just talk through the items that were attached to the packet? So in, in preparation of tonight's introduction to this potential ordinance change, I asked Stephanie to do some research as to what the rental rate has been for our existing lots, and we have three lots that we, we permit, um, parking in, the Hickory Street Lot. You can see in your packet, pages 64 and 65 have, and this is a year 2019, have a, have a pretty successful permitting rate, probably approximately 60%. You can see some are just a few months as it get, got into the later, um, the later permitted numbers, but a solid 60% of that lot has been rented. The Walnut Street Lot, the, this is the lot that's in question, has percentage-wise the most success. All the, all of the available permitted 27 were, were permitted in 2019. And then the Fire Department Lot, we have 15 available spots, and only a handful of them were permitted in 2015, or 2019. The last item is the map, trying to show available parking in the area. It's color-coded. It does get into the Tier 1, Tier 2, um, parking. Probably defer to Adam Gitter from the bid. If, if you have questions specifically about, about that tiered parking and how that's to work in the downtown area. It does show the three permitted, um, parking lots in red, and those are the ones I just rattled through. Uh, the green part or the northern portion of the Hickory Street Lot, which is commonly referred to as, and the northern most, uh, if you zoomed in, the northernmost, uh, northeasternmost five parking stalls are the ones that are referenced in this ordinance amendment. And then the other public available parking across the, the river in yellow. And Steve, I know there's some people that were desiring to be here to make comments. I, I talked to Mike Husar and Chief Moiler, and neither of them were able to make it tonight.
Do you think that this is going to open up requests from other businesses on the opposite end of downtown for similar spots near their businesses, even though I know there's no city-owned lots down there, but asking for that on the street?
I did hear that from Mike Husar, that, um, if, if the council were inclined to grant this ordinance change, that, that he would ask for the same in front of his store on the public street.
And if that request is made, that Safety Commission, or is that our, or is that? I know, I know this has been flip-flop back and forth. I understand that.
Ian, I'm not sure if you have an opinion on the Safety Commission's?
I would say that's more of a Safety Commission issue because it's on-street. Um, most of the time, on-street parking is designated in the traffic manual. This is private lots owned by the city, so we govern those separate from the Safety Commission. Um, I, I mean, we've designated, made different designations for other lots before, so.
So we would just basically take those as they come?
The, I mean, they would essentially, yeah, they would end up going to the Safety Commission for either recommendation for approval or not.
Okay.
I think part of the, the reason to introduce the topic and not take action on it today was to allow the council to have an exposure to it as a proposed ordinance, and then schedule it for the next bid board meeting, which I know Mike Husar is prepared to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that, that makes sense too. I'm, I'm on the bid board also. I know there's, uh, there's some other potentials like time of the day and the amount of time that these spots might be used during different times of the day for different purposes and, and that sort of thing. So it, having the business owners downtown involved in the conversation makes a lot of sense.
Do you know off the top of your head, or you or Adam, the ones that we have in the Walnut Street Lot now, there's 24 that say customer parking only, and it's Monday through Friday with a timeline, correct?
I'm not sure about that.
I looked at it today. I thought it was like 9:00 to 5:00 or something like that. Um, this one was proposed, if I'm correct. This one was proposed, if I'm correct?
Eight to eight.
8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday? Or is it just during the week, or?
Like it's every day.
Every day, okay.
I think the, the theory behind the timeframe, and Ian, you drafted it, tell me if, if I'm incorrect, but it, it's to post 8:00 PM, allow the bars and restaurants?
Correct.
To fill those spots?
Correct.
Because the businesses that would need 30-minute in-and-out?
Yes.
Would be closed at that time.
It's aimed at retail, the 30-minute in-and-out would be aimed at retail versus restaurants or bars.
Yeah, it'd be pretty good if you get it in 30 minutes. Chris?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, but, but first, can I get a little bit of history on the, the permit parking lots? Who's the primary buyer of those permits? What's the income to the city? How long have we been doing it? So I don't know who can answer those questions.
Buddy? Do you have the spreadsheet? The spreadsheets are attached?
Yeah.
No, I took off the names though.
Oh, as far as who?
Yeah, I just see lots of X's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say it's largely, you know, people who work downtown. Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that one, that one would be the Westbury Building, if there's any overflow there, and then the building on the corner with Jason and Schlemer likely, and maybe a few other people in that area. The ones on Hickory Street would be, you know, the people who work in Centrum or the other office, your, you know, settings there.
So is it the individuals who are purchasing the spaces, or is it the business purchasing it for their?
Either or.
Yes.
And so what kind of income do we derive from that?
They've always been, Walnut has always been sold out. Walnut has always been sold out. There's usually a waiting list for that one, and then the Hickory Lot, am I right?
Do you know how much it is? How much is it a year?
$240 a year.
Per space?
Per space.
So I guess what I'm getting at, and what I would want more information to compare is, you know, sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, but where they're asking for this 30-minute parking, that is not where the permit parking is in that parking lot?
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'm just asking a broader question that, you know, we hear, you know, that parking's an issue downtown, so I just wonder if there's something to keep in mind, if there's any more leniency we can give to those areas, just for more regular usage of that parking rather than it being all bought up by a few individuals. But I, I don't know the answer to that, I would just be curious to get more information. Thank you.
John?
Yes, Steve, I, I agree. I think we should give it some time to get some good discussions on it before I, I can make an honest opinion on that as well.
Okay, anybody else? Just not moving on. Item 13, a report by Alderman Model regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Okay, oops, sorry. All right, when was this? We met January 7th. We elected new, or not new, but we elected board members. Mike Husar continues to be president, Tony Jason continues to be vice president, and Peggy Fisher, I believe, is new to the secretary role. We discussed the Christmas Day decor downtown. It seems to have been a, a pretty decent success this year, lots of good comments about that. Barton got some of the old stuff from downtown, which it really appreciates, and will be forwarding a donation on to the Downtown Association or Bid, or whoever, whoever that's going to go to, I'm not sure how that works, but we really appreciate that. We also talked about possibly doing more downtown with the Christmas decor for next year. Haven't gotten real specific on that yet, but that'll be more to come down there. We got into a little bit, there's been some discussion on dogway stations, we continued that discussion, kind of decided on maybe not doing receptacles, but just bag dispensaries and possibly watering stations. And that's about it.
Thanks, Justice. Any questions for Justice? Not item 14, a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the Planning Commission meeting.
All right. First off, we were, we held a public hearing to review the zoning proposal for the industrial land on 4450 Roan Road, which we also approved tonight. We approved a certified survey map for creating two lots along Decorah Road. We approved combining, combining two lots at 4196 Woodcrest Ridge Drive, and then finally, we looked at a site plan for a parking lot reconfiguration and small building addition for Heart and Soul Pet Clinic on Washington Street.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
Did you say Heart and Soul Pet Clinic?
Heart and Soul Pet Clinic, correct. Yep.
Item 15 was going to be a report by Alderman Kasten on the Touring Commission meeting, but unfortunately he's ill. You can do that?
I can, if you want.
Be my guest.
All right. The Tourism Commission met recently, and they decided to put out two grant offerings for nonprofits to spur additional tourism in, in West Bend. One for spring and summer that will be out shortly, and then another one again for fall, winter, that would come out in a few months. So if you're thinking about applying and knocking an event out of the park in the city of West Bend, please do so.
Where is that application?
It will be posted on our website and issued through a press release. Very soon.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions for Jay? If not, being no further business but toward, before the Common Council, I adjourn. Any announcements from anyone? If not, have a good evening, everyone.